The meeting is muted.
Okay, I just got unlocked. If you call for an audience of citizens, I'm here, Donna Bovee.
Meeting is muted.
Here now.
Can you hear me, Donna?
Yes, yes, I can now.
Good. All right. So you're first up in our audience of citizens.
Okay, thank you. So two items that I'm here to address. One is as Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. Later tonight, you'll be looking at the revised statement of need for the community and senior center proposal. Statement of need from Parks and Rec. Unfortunately, the previous A D at the high school neglected to include the diving requirements for the competitive pool. And so Parks and Rec, along with the high school new A D and the swim coaches have revised the statement of need to include the diving areas. There's a couple of options that are put in there for the architect to take a look at, and obviously the building commission before the architect. This was one of the comments, and it was really the major comment that was identified when the architect put it out to the public. So it's unfortunate it was missed in the beginning, but we do need to revise it so that the high school could use the competitive pool. The second item, I'm here to just, I understand, and I'm speaking now as a town resident, taxpayer, and golfer. But I understand you're going to be addressing the tee time policy between residents and non-residents. And, you know, just my opinion, but I do believe the residents do deserve a benefit. They support the course throughout the various years, you know, both in perhaps subsidizing and taking the risk. So with that, I believe that they should have some benefit to the tee time, and I'll leave it at that. So those are the two issues. I know Jen Akka and the town manager will be addressing the statement of need when it comes up on your agenda.
Okay, thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
Anyone else with the audience of citizens which is to speak? Now would be your time.
Yes, Peter Zerbozo, 158 Elwood Road. Can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, just making sure. I just want to say that I support the resolution that's on the docket regarding the home rule policy in regards to the state wishing to impose, you know, forced multifamily homing, homes in our town, et cetera. So I do support that resolution. I also think that this budget proposal going forth for the year is pretty favorable, and I appreciate that there isn't going to be a mill rate increase. And lastly, I would just like to say, either in this budget proposal or moving forward, to really consider allocating more funding when it's possible to the Berlin Peck Library. I think it's a phenomenal resource for this town. I think it's something that sometimes can be underutilized and may not even have enough funding. And for further consideration, to perhaps wrap up resources that the Board of Education might utilize along with the library. For instance, if, you know, the school was going to have a maker space or, you know, some type of large investment into a certain hobby for the students, it's probably something that could be shared, you know, with the library and allow more residents to directly utilize and benefit from it.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else in the audience of citizens? Hearing no one else, go ahead and close the audience of citizens and move on to our meeting agenda, starting with our consent agenda. We have multiple items here. Nine items, so we can just run through them real quick. It's mostly our accepting donations, burnable control, the anniversary celebration, of course, donating around the goal to, you know, Larch and St. Paul's School. Approved Temple Golf Club hosting the 2021 amateur qualifier in Wigan Green Speeds, approved Little League to be able to sell food beverages, ice cream, candy for the 2021 baseball season, and then Denny and Cintralies. Approved acceptance of donations to the fishing derbies, Berlin Park and Rags, approved request by St. Paul's School that have field usage fees not to exceed an amount of 60 way for the school soccer team practice, except monetary donations, approximately $1,600 to the Berlin Peck Library. And deposit some of that in front of the library. And accept the donation of 25 voting stations from the Norwich Register Voter's Office with an apartment value of $3,750. And those are the nine consent agenda items. And if we have any comments or questions before we take a motion, now would be the time. I do have one just on the voting stations, and just what?
You can't discuss consent items, so you can vote on one through eight and then take up nine.
Let's do that. So let's do a motion from one through eight.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Lady here. I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda list tonight.
Thank you. Second? Second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. So number nine.
Go ahead and take it up now.
So just out of curiosity.
Sure.
Yeah.
Both Christie and Joan are on line.
Oh, okay.
I can answer something if you want to. Joan is on, Joan.
Go.
Yeah. Hi, good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay. Basically, Christie and I received a notification from the Register of Voters down in Norwich and that they are replacing all of their voting stations. And they wanted to know, because they had some very good ones left, if we were interested in how many. And of course, we responded in a positive yes, and how many can you send us? And basically, we are going to be receiving approximately 25 stations. These stations are in very good order. If we were to buy them used, Christie had done a little bit of research and found that the best price is probably about $150 each value. However, if we were to actually purchase them new, we're looking at at least $359 to $399 per voting station. These are the stand-up tables that we use at the voting districts, and they can easily be utilized to replace broken ones that we may have and also utilized if we wanted to cannibalize some of the stations for parts or whatever. So we see this as a win-win for the town. It's not costing us anything for the stations. The only thing that we needed approval for was obviously pickup truck and the use of facilities to run down and retrieve them as quickly as possible before they fly off the shelf, so to speak. So if you have any questions, Mayor or council folks, I'll be happy to see if I can answer them. I think my counterpart Christie is also on the line somewhere, but.
That sounds like a great find. Shouldn't utilize that. So any other question? I think we're good. Thank you. Just was curious.
Yay. Okay. Well, thank you and have a nice night.
Problem here. Thanks. So we have number nine. Go ahead and take a motion.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to accept the donation of 25 voting stations from the Norwich Register of Voters Office with an approximate value of $3,750.
Second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. Okay, so now we can move on to our public hearing time. So I hereby convene the public hearing for the $1,500,000 Energy Conservation Lighting Upgrades 2021 Appropriation and Bond Ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained on the town website. Need a motion in a second. We can file the following proposed ordinance and to waive the remainder of the ordinance. Incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting. Need a motion. So second. Favor. Aye, aye, both. Motion passes. An ordinance appropriating $1,500,000 for the town-wide energy serving lighting upgrades 2021 and authorizing the issue of $1,500,000 for the bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof and making temporary borrowing for such purpose. So this is a public hearing, so we are open to take public comments. Any comments for us on this? And you know what? Maybe Roche, or maybe just the two. And it's just what it is, you know, so we'll understand what we're.
So this is a lighting upgrade that we are planning to do at the Berlin High School, place all the light fixtures with LEDs and control units, so that first of all, it consumes less energy. The second one, nobody's occupied the building. So motion sensitive. The ever-source is providing a credit program that we want to participate, that would pay for this grant. It's about $915,000 still, but it's passed to the town. But in four, five years, I believe it's four years, the savings from using the LEDs will itself be for the project. But since it is considered debt, saving somebody else's money to someone, and we need to have an audit in place. Okay, so that it's considered debt, I hope, please.
Thanks for that explanation. So everybody stands there. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none? Go ahead and call the public hearing on the $1.5 million lighting upgrade 2021 bond ordinance closed. So we're on to new business.
Thank you. Business number one. 2021, 22, Madison Sewer District, which is online, to give us a brief overview.
Oh, yes. Greetings, everybody. This is Art Simonian from the Madison District. I also have with me John Dunham, who's our board chairman, who's also a Berlin resident. I'm not sure if there's any other Berlin members on the call, but Jim Fallon is also on our board and Bob Argosy is another member. So we do this each year. John and I come to the council and present a brief overview of the Madison Sewer Budget. There should be an item in your package with the summary of the agenda items, along with the budget breakdown behind there. And then the last sheet should be a budget comparison for the last, looks like we did it for about last eight years, to show you comparison of the budget and assessments. So this year was exceptionally challenging, not due to COVID, but more because we had some increases in utility costs. I'm going to turn down my volume because I think I've caused a little echoing. Utility costs that have risen up from the ever-source distribution cost that we see rising and also due to the retirement account, the Murph retirement account that we participate in with the state went up pretty significantly. I think it went up about 30% as far as the employer's contribution. So those were some of the challenges with the budget this year. We were able to take advantage of some reserve funds, which you'll see on the second page. I highlighted in yellow a $250,000 reserve fund that we're using, basically like the town would use some of the reserve balance. We're using about $250,000 to help offset the assessments a little bit. And then the other thing that we do each year for the three charter communities, which are the original members, New Britain, Berlin, and Cromwell. There's a buy-in fee of $13 million for Middletown when they joined the district. Those funds actually get distributed back to those three communities over the course of about 25 years. And this year's credit to Berlin is about $187,000, $188,000. That credit's been going down, and this year it went down significantly, not due to any issues or causes of concern, but it was just that we had accelerated the credit for about three or four years before Middletown fully joined the district. And now that Middletown is fully connected, they're paying a much larger portion of the annual budget for Madison. So there, you know, you could look in the assessment pages further on to show you what their portion is of the budget, but it's significantly gone up quite a bit. And the other thing I want to mention too, and then we'll talk a little bit about the budget for a few minutes. But the other thing I want to mention is the I and I work that Berlin's been doing, and John may want to add something here. But the I and I work is very important. We're starting to see, obviously, the higher flows from the storm events we've been getting, but also with Middletown joining the district, we're seeing much higher flows overall. And, you know, we can only handle so much flow through our secondary treatment system. So dropping that I and I, and this doesn't just apply to Berlin, but also to Kensington and Worthington, is very important because eventually the state's going to come down, kind of leaning hard on us and obviously the communities as well about reducing that I and I. So, John, I'll probably have you talk maybe, you know, my, I'll just finish up the budgets and maybe you could wrap up with the I and I a little bit.
That's fine. Yeah, finish up the budget discussion and then I want to kind of close with a discussion about that. So that's fine.
Okay, sounds good. So the budget, which is on page three of your package or four, if you count the agenda item, $16.6, $16.7 million. It's about a 3.7% increase. I talked about the main drivers, which you could see the changes on the right side. You know, the percentages, some of them are a little bit higher, but dollar amounts, the retirement benefits is one of the big things that I mentioned before, and then electricity. We are also doing an energy performance project. I know the town's doing some lighting, which is great to hear that. And I know the town did the LED lights a while ago through the streetlights, but we also did an energy performance project. So we're starting to see some benefits from there as well. It's saving us a couple hundred thousand dollars a year is what we're expecting. So and then each year we have to dispose of the ash that's collected in our ash lagoons, and that gets transported over to the landfill located on the border of Berlin and New Britain on Edgewood Avenue. So that's something we put in the budget each year. Capital, we did some interesting things this year. Some of our capital items from years past, we were actually able to transfer those into the operational costs instead of capital because they're more recurrent items. So that actually translated some of those costs into the reserve part of the budget, into the into the reserve capacities of the budget as opposed to from reserve into operations, I should say. So it's actually a little bit better as your flow dropped on, you'll see some of those benefits. And then the legal notice, which is on page, I believe, four, shows you the breakdown between New Britain, Berlin, and Cromwell as far as their assessments. So you could see who's paying what in terms of that. And that's generally it with the budget. Nothing too unusual this year, again, other than those two major increases that we had to absorb and the lower credit going back to the three charter towns. But again, that was done really as a benefit for the towns for four years. Your budgets were pretty low. The last sheet that you should all look at, I think it's a great snapshot of what the budget's been the last seven years. But the last four years, the budget has averaged about a 3.2% increase. And Berlin's assessment since 2017 averaged about a 2.3% annual increase. So even though this year it went up quite a bit because of that credit reduction, it's a 2.3% average increase the last five years, which I think is pretty reasonable, considering, you know, the amount of capital we have to keep into the plant. So with that, I'll turn it back to the council and if they could maybe call on Chairman John Dunham to maybe speak a few minutes about the I and I work.
Okay, thank you, Art. Appreciate that. John, welcome.
Yeah, so I guess first, before I go, if anybody has any questions on the budget, why don't you ask, you can ask Art, I guess, of those now, maybe. Might be the appropriate time if we just finished that, or I can just go into my comments, whatever you guys would like to do.
Questions? No, I think we're good, John.
Okay, John Dunham, Chairman of the Board, I'm at 165 Oak Ridge Drive. First of all, I wanted, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for having us here tonight. You know, so of significant concern to us that has been our I and I issues that we've been dealing with. And the main reason for that is we've been trying to renew our operating permit. And DEEP has been pushing back pretty hard on us concerning the I and I. And as part of getting our permit finally signed off on, one of the things that we sort of capitulated on in a way is to, is that we said we would go back to the towns and try and partner with you and work with you as far as, you know, understanding what the issues were and you understanding ours and working towards the goal of reduced I and I. I think ultimately it becomes a funding issue. The I and I work is very expensive, and I think that's really what's holding most people back on that. But I think at some point, and we've already attended the Berlin Water Control Commission meeting, and we'll probably attend some of the other, the fire district in Worthington to have these discussions as well. But really, our goal is just to remind you folks of it and to just, you know, understand that DEEP is putting pressure on us to communicate to you the need for it and what they've done. And maybe I won't use the word threaten, but they've kind of held over our head that if it doesn't get resolved, then they're going to look for us to try and resolve it. So what does that mean? We already just rebuilt our plant at the tune of $110 million just about four or five years ago. And, you know, the thought of another plant upgrade does not sit well with me when DEEP already approved it. So, you know, I think that that's, it's not a prudent way to go. It becomes not very cost-effective. We're kind of at maximum capacity as far as our footprint goes for our plant. We didn't have much room to build more tankage. And so we did the best we could to control as much flow as we can. Now, DEEP is harping on frequency of the storms, and we didn't design for frequency. We designed for a volume, an MGD. And so we've pushed back pretty hard to them on that, but they are the regulatory agency and that's sort of how they operate. So this is just, I just wanted to kind of notify you, make you folks aware of it. I think at some point we can have discussions further on down the road as we look at what the plans are for each of the for the water control commission in the districts to address that I and I. And, you know, it's a long-range thing. My thought, long range to DEEP was 10 to 20 years. I think they're thinking more in the five-year range. But even still, it's not something that imminently has to be done, but really needs to be thought of and put on the forefront. So those are just, I just wanted to make you aware of that and just, you know, keep the lines of communication open to you about that. So that's really all I had. The only other thing as a wrap-up, we really have been looking cost-wise, trying to, as Art mentioned, we're doing an energy project, kind of reduce our energy costs wherever possible. And we recently negotiated with our unions, and really they were pretty modest increases and locked in salaries over the next four years. So I think that gives us consistency for the next several years as far as planning our budget, as long as electricity prices remain stable. So that's always, that's a big driver of our budget as well. So that's it. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you, everyone.
And if I could just add just one thing too, John mentioned about cost savings. We're actually approached the state about refinancing part of our clean water fund loan. John mentioned the $110 million project. We have outstanding about $53 million. And we're looking to refinance that because of the low interest rates that are out there right now. So hopefully that'll go through and save us a little money on our debt service, which will help everybody.
Right. That's, unfortunately, we're at the whim of the market, and if we could have done this two months ago when the interest rates were rock bottom, that would have been great, but there's a process to refinancing your bonds and like refinancing your home. And so we're hopeful that we'll still be able to reap some savings, but we won't know for a couple of months.
All right, thank you, John. Any questions for John?
Yes, you could explain to council when the I and I meets a long month.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's infiltration, and it's basically from rainwater. And when it rains hard and that extra water getting into the sewer system, and what it does is it overloads our plant. So in a normal condition, I think we treat what about 15 million gallons a day, Art? But on a heavy wet weather day, when it's raining very hard and very high intensity, we could be treating up to 100 million gallons out of the plant. And our plant can only handle with what they call secondary treatment, 55 million gallons a day. So what that means, we have to blend water that's only been treated partially through our system with fully treated water. Now, it still meets all the requirements of our permit, but DEEP doesn't really like the idea of us blending our effluent before we put it out into the Connecticut River. So that's why they're very conscious of that. So that's what I and I is about. Sorry for using the, going to terminology without explaining.
Yeah, and just to carry on that too a little bit, John mentioned about the flows. Our average flows are about 20. During some of these storm events we had the last year or two, they've gone up over 80 million. We've hit 110 million gallons per day, which is five, almost like five times the normal flow or the average flow. It shows you how much of that rainwater is not only leaking into the pipes, but also could be tied in with people's catch basins or sump pumps or yard drains that are illegally connected to the sewer system. So that's a big part of where our flow comes from. So, you know, think about your average flows going up five times during a storm event. That shows you how much rain is getting in there.
Can you just repeat what you said when the average flow was? You cut off your phrase.
Sorry, I was probably partially muted. Our average flow is about 25 million gallons per day. And then it goes up as high as about 110 million gallons a day during a major storm.
Thank you.
So is DEEP asking, I just wanted to get clarification, DEEP is asking you now to rework what you've already rebuilt to handle all that stuff? Is this, are they asking you to do?
Well, they're not really asking us necessarily. They're not requiring us yet to do that, but I think they're sort of leaning. But I think they're sort of leaning, if it somehow it doesn't get addressed, if the I am, if the, if the flows don't get reduced, then I think they're, you know, they will then come back to us and and talk to us about modifications potentially to our plant to address and and handle the increased flows. And then like anything else, it's to handle that extra little bit, the efficiencies drop dramatically. I mean, it would be very, very expensive to do that. So, you know, like I said, it's not something that they're saying we have to do this year or next year. They're looking at it from a, their view is a five to eight year type timeframe. And again, they're looking at, they believe that the frequency of storms have increased. I argued back and said, you know, that's, it's too short a timeframe. It's hard to say whether our high wet weather events over the last five years are a trend for the next 10 or 20. You know, I can't predict the weather. They seem to think they can, but I kind of argued with them about that.
Okay, thanks, John and Art. Any questions, fellow council members? Appreciate you guys coming. Appreciate the rapport. Keep up the good work and talk to you soon.
Thank you for having us. Have a good night.
Take care, everyone. Thanks. It's an update on motor vehicle taxes and lawsuits. Chief Clip.
Good evening, everyone. Jeremy? How's everybody doing? So the mayor asked me to come and give you an update on where we at with the, our current situation with the stolen cars and the and the motor vehicle breaks. We had a pretty good downturn in January. February came up a little bit. March, we're about where we were last year. The interesting thing is that they're not stealing cars from private residences anymore. We have had no cars taken from private residents. They're all being, well, we had six last month. Four were taken from places of employment. So people were at work and left their keys in their cars unlocked. One was taken from an acquaintance and the other one was from a dealership. So it's odd that it's moved away from that. You know, the the thefts from the vehicles are, again, we're having, we've done a lot to try to combat this and we've been able to run off quite a few more people than we had before. Our outreach program there with the public community relations team, we've got 11 block watches up right now. We've got four or five more that are interested. Last month, we had 54 citizen calls in of suspicious vehicles, which we're able to get out there and you know, and run these guys off or get them out of here. And when they see us, they're gone usually. So there's five times where we actually interrupted people in the middle of these things, but in every case they fled. We had one individual who stole a car and used it to steal other, well, another break into a bunch of other cars. We got, we had video of that individual and we were able to identify him. So there's a warrant pending for him. He happens to be a guy who's been arrested six or seven times already. He's out on bond. He has three FTA warrants and four hard copy warrants. One of ours is in process, so that'll be another one for him. The, the, we've added officers to every shift. The reason we did it to every shift is because they're coming in the daylight. We've had, we had one the other day where they tried to get into a car on the Britton Road. They had a business. They were seen. They took off. We found them, but they, you know, they took off into New Britain. But at least we're displacing them anyway. So, so we added officers, so we're up to a four man minimum. We have plenty of, the funding is not a problem. We have the necessary resources to do that. It also allows us to conduct more motor vehicle enforcement. The bonus of that is that not only do we make the road safer, but it's a good interdiction tool for criminals coming through town because they don't want to drive in here when they see us stopping everything. You know, or at least trying to. We have participant, well, I've assigned a detective to the New Britain and mid-state chiefs, motor vehicle theft task forces. So one of them is based in Rocky Hill. The other one's New Britain. We haven't had a, an opportunity to do a joint operation yet, but we've got a really good intelligence from the other towns pulling resources, pulling knowledge. So we know who these, you know, most of the players are. And really, it's a what we know, it's a fairly small group of young adults and late teenagers that are, that are responsible for the bulk of this. You know, there's always the outliers, but I think once the courts get back in operation right now, the courts are just starting up again. They have not had a trial in, in Britain since March of last year. And a lot of the people that would have been pled out and spent time in jail or had been, you know, convicted are not because their misdemeanance and they're out on bond. And it's one individual I just told you about, you know, he's been arrested six or seven times. And, and he has yet to have, to see the inside of a courtroom. But once that gets off, I think, problem is we've got all this water backed up behind the dam. And once they get that court back open, then we can start prosecuting some of these people. It's going to take a lot of the pressure off. So some of the things we've done, I've already mentioned, but we're also, our detectives are processing any vehicle that we can recover. If there's any viable evidence in it, we have recovered DNA from a couple of them, which is going to result in warrants. And if there's any evidence at the scene, most of the time there isn't. But if we do get video or we get a report from other agencies where the vehicle's been involved, our detectives are following up on that. We did have a vehicle that was stolen here that was used in a carjacking in Farmington and ran a Windsor Cruiser off the road and tried to ram a second one when they tried to stop it. So these are, like I said, these are relatively small groups of people that are doing this. The other thing we do is the Ring Neighborhood Application. So we've been able to get some information from that, which is good. Again, video, one of our warrants is a result of video we got from a convenience store, which happened to, where they used a credit card that was stolen from a vehicle in town. So, you know, we're making some progress. The big thing that's changed is the theft of catalytic converters. That's gone up. We had 10 of those in February, 10 of them in March. And these are almost entirely done in businesses. It's a national problem. I've read there's dealerships out in the Midwest that actually deflate the tires and all the vehicles in their parking lots at night so they can't, so they can't get underneath them and cut these things off. So those are, those have come up. This month so far, we've only had one stolen car and it was stolen from a business and it's been, it was unregistered and left in a parking lot for over a month. Nothing, nothing taken from vehicles. I'm sorry. One motor vehicle theft, one theft from a vehicle and nothing, no motor vehicle parts. So no, no catalytic converters yet this month. So that's where we're at. I mean, we've, we've said, I think it's been effective, our motor vehicle is effective as it can be based on, you know, what the problem is. I think it's great that the community is really starting to wake up, well, you know, wake up and report it to us and lock their vehicles. That's the biggest thing. We've only had a couple of windows smashed. Last year, late in the year, there was two up in the Newington line and we had two over the weekend. But these two over the weekend do not look like larceny. It looked more like vandalism than larceny. It was a back window in the neighborhood where the mayor lives. And there was another one from New Britain Road that, that looks like vandalism more than somebody trying to steal anything. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, hey, John, thank you for this. So the shifts, I know at one of the police commission meetings, we were talking and we're having some trouble, understandably so. We only have, you know, we have so many, so much staff and they're, they're working. There's shifts, the regular shifts, but are you able to fill the shift now with the four cars better or?
Yeah, well, yes, we have our schedule. If we were at full strength, at full strength, we never have less than four officers and and a sergeant, sometimes as many as six and two sergeants. So we now, you know, if everybody, you know, right now, if it was a full strength, that would not be an issue at all. The only time it becomes an issue is so many times thinks time off. I've been able to fill every shift to four men or women, cops. So we have been able to do that. You know, it's actually cheaper to fill with overtime than it is to hire somebody to do, an additional officer. So, you know, with very few exceptions, we've been able to fill that. And like I said, it's not, it's not just a midnight shift problem. It's all three shifts. And we have had sufficient, you know, just muted myself. Funding hasn't been an issue. We are, we are, we, I'm confident that we have enough money in our budget to do that within our existing budget. So and keep that up for the remainder of the year. And as we get the, we have three recruits in training right now, two are in FTO and one, our one's in the academy. And once they come out, like I said, at full strength, the only time we would be less than four is if someone took a day off and that would be filled with overtime. So it would be easier that way. Not a problem, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's great. Well, that's great to hear, you know, because I think we, and all the discussions you've had with your police commission with the council here, with the public, and obviously we, the best, seems like the best thing to do with this. I know it's a very difficult problem for all, all the towns in Connecticut, but it's to be visible, right? And like you said, chase them away and let them know that we're out there.
Ideally, we can get them on foot, which is then, then it's, you know, it's fair game. When we have to chase it, we, obviously we can't chase them in a vehicle. So we have had a couple of instances where we were able to get them on foot and cut, and one in New Britain in particular, where we were following a car that had OnStar or the BMW equivalent of that. And they were giving us a blow by blow of where the car was and finally stopped in a park and we were able to apprehend the two individuals. One of whom was a juvenile who had cut his ankle bracelet off the week before.
Well, appreciate you keeping on top of this problem. You know, and all the towns, like I said, are facing it and keep up the good work and keep our guys out on the street so we can chase these guys away.
Absolutely.
Any questions? The chief? No? We're good. Thank you, John. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right.
agenda item number three is the fiscal year 22 general fund budget.
There he is.
Oh, good evening. I'll be, I'll be brief. I think you've all received a lot of information on this. You know, when the council and the board of finance got together, the council laid out a few priorities that they would like the board to try to incorporate into the budget proposal. The one consistent theme from all members of the council was a target to keep taxes flat, to have a zero mill rate budget. And the budget that the board of finance is sending to the council and asks that the council send to the voters at referendum has a zero mill rate increase. The other elements, the other priorities of education, public safety, to the extent possible, making some investment in capital and infrastructure were addressed to the extent possible. Obviously, a zero mill rate budget does limit some of those opportunities. And the board of finance worked collectively to try to balance the need to restrain some of the spending increases with the overall objectives of what the community was looking for, as well as continuing to meet required spend. In aggregate, it's a 2.7% spending increase. It utilizes some money that is expected to be left after the high school project is closed. It also uses a little bit of the federal money that is coming forward. There are limitations as to how that money can be used. And so the board did use some of that money, 700,000 to be specific. We have seen revenue shortfalls during the global pandemic and unlike previous federal programs during coronavirus, the latest one that President Biden signed does allow for some use of or recovery of revenue shortfalls in addition to various other spending opportunities. So as I said, it comes forward with a 2.7% increase. It's split between the board of ed and general government, a 3.2% or $1,469,000 increase for the board of ed and a 2.3% or $1,014,000 increase for general government. With that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions.
Thanks, Kevin. No, it's, it was, you know, we had a good joint meeting with the board of finance and we, you know, all voiced our opinion about that. And was, and we had some thoughts on how to cover obviously our budget and still give a 0%, 0% mill increase, which was great. They took some of those suggestions, ran with it and had a couple others to get to where we're at. So that's all good. I appreciate, you know, hard work of everybody, certainly Roche, yourself, the town staff. I know everybody puts in a lot of time. It's always a very busy time of year. So thank you to everybody working on this. It's pretty good. The one thing for me, just in a lot, let everybody speak, that is, I'm confused with and it concerns me that we have a budget. And talk about the board of that, we have, you know, we talked about this a little bit earlier. I know, I believe it was brought up at the board of finance and I don't think we ever really got an answer from them. At least when I saw the presentation, we have these pie charts, right? So there seems to be a wide range of percentage that the town, you know, from the town revenue, it goes to the board of that. So the board of that, at the presentation in the 30th, has at the bottom of the heap at 50%. At the top of the heap is our auditor's report at 65% goes to the board of that. And then there's two other numbers in between. I think it's a 59% number and a 55 or 56% number. So there's four different numbers on what the town's contribution is to the board of that. That, that seems quite a wide, wide range. I don't think we've done our due diligence with the public to tell them how much actually goes to the board of that. We have a 15% difference in four different numbers and two different pie charts. Plus the board event with the 50%. And I thought that was discussed at the board of finance, but I don't think they ever included the discussion and they sent the budget forward with, I think the number in the budget information is 59%, if I'm not mistaken. Roche, in your budget, I think, but there's so many different numbers. Go ahead. Yeah, no, go ahead.
I, I believe it's 56%. I can, I can, I can try to address if you'd like the differences. They are explainable. I'll start first with the auditor's numbers. So that number is quite high. When you look at expenditures, the comprehensive annual financial report includes payments on behalf of. So these are payments that the state makes on behalf of municipalities. The state is making payments effectively into the teacher's retirement fund. And that's to the tune of several million dollars. That's not actual payments that the town makes. However, that is considered in the comprehensive annual financial report to be an education expense. So that is the biggest single driver of why the number is so much higher in the comprehensive annual financial report versus an operating report is there is a substantial cost that is made on the town's behalf. On the low end, the 50% number that the board of ed was using in their presentation is a straight percentage of just what we call, you know, department 60, just the board of ed submitted budget. In between that, you get to how do you handle department 61? So department 61 are expenditures specifically related to education. They include school nurses, facilities and grounds doing work there, school security guards, as well as utilities, electricity and the like. And insurance of liability insurance for the school buildings, workers comp. All of that is included in the general government budget, but it is really a, an education expense. And that's where it becomes difficult when you start comparing town to town. Different towns handle those expenditures differently. Many towns include those in the education budget. Many towns actually budget capital for the school, provide the funding and it's up to the school to determine that money. That is actually left in department 61 in Berlin. So the 56% takes the board of ed budget as developed by the superintendent and adopted by the board of ed, plus department 61, since those are dedicated education expenses. I would argue that that's probably the most fair representation of what a true total education cost would be. You could argue that debt service for school related You could argue that debt service for school-related costs, um, should also be included there. But, um, in our case, we've, in, in what you saw in the town manager's presentation, debt was its own slice of the pie. And that was both town and board of ed. But that's why you have such a, a wide variation between what, what's in the audit report versus what the board of ed presented and then what's incorporated in the town managers. Hopefully that helped clear it up and not create more confusion.
That helps. So again, but we're still left with this BOE chart. Uh, Berlin has the lowest percentage, 50.74%, which is not correct. So, you know, we're reporting this to the taxpayers. And if this really should be 56%, this is what they presented to the board of finance, and nobody said a word about it. Nobody changed it. Nobody asked a question about it. Um, that's not a fair representation to how we're supporting our education. So we're not at the bottom of the list. If I'm looking at the list, this is their list, or what they got from the different towns. And do we know all these other towns report? Because if Glastonbury includes the figures that's in our, you know, auditors' report of 65%, then I guess we're at the top of the list. We're obviously not at the bottom. So it, it's just disturbing to me that, you know, you know, we're talking about put this pie chart out. And we talked about using the pie chart that the auditors, uh, came up with for the, uh, for the tax bills, um, in July. So, and, and, and I, I think Eros and I had this discussion that, you know, obviously we, we know different towns report it differently, but again, you don't, you don't have a good explanation from the board of ed that why, why are they picking 50% other than to make it look like we're, we're funding at very low levels, which is obviously not the case. We're, we're somewhere in the middle here. You know, good or bad, we're not at the bottom. Uh, you know, Weathersfield, Rocky Hills, fifty-four, so we're right up there, I guess, close to Cromwell. And I would argue maybe higher. So I, I, I just don't know how we, we send a budget forward that, you know, very hard to explain this to a member of the public. And I don't think that's fair. I don't know what we're gonna, I don't really know what we're gonna put in the tax bill now, since we're saying that the 65% from the auditors is not correct, I guess, or a different way of looking at it. But don't all the towns, when auditors come to their town, use kind of the same accounting principles? So if I went to the auditors' report in Glastonbury, when I see the same type of pie chart? Or is every auditor reporting in a different way? I understand that they don't. That is pretty standardized from what I understand. So how, how do we fix this, though? It's, it's not, it's just not a fair representation, the percentage of money that we give to the board of that. And again, we shouldn't be able to have a number that we all agree upon, not four different numbers. I don't, that's just a very, uh, not, not a very good way of doing things, which would make me as a, as a taxpayer, if I didn't know better. I mean, we're involved in the process, and we, we certainly understand your explanation, I think, to a certain extent. But to translate that to the taxpayers is very difficult to do, um, which, you know, to me, I'm a taxpayer sitting there at home, listening to this, calls into question, how, how many other numbers are in the budget? I don't know. So, you know, I, I'll ask the council members what they think and how we fix this. Because it's not, you know, the zero percent is great. I mean, we're, we're glad that's where we're at. But if numbers in the budget are not correct, that we're supposed to report to the townspeople, you know, what's going in the police department, what's going to the town, what's going to the board of that, that's not correct. So I guess that would maybe change other percentages too, obviously. If a higher amount's going to the board of that. So what, what, what do you all think?
Kevin, can I just ask you, you mentioned that between the board of ed budget plus department sixty-one, what percentage does that represent?
Uh, it's in the, in the proposed budget, it would be about 56%.
So the board of ed budget plus department sixty-one, which, correct me if I'm wrong, are all the expenditures specific to education? So, I mean, accounting is accounting. Would you not think that that number should be incorporated with their requests so that we're at least looking at 56%, which seems to be in line with some of the other communities?
Uh, I, I would say that, yes. Um, I mean, the, the board, uh, developed its own presentation.
Based off of what I'm hearing here, I, I don't think that 50% is an accurate number. Like Mark said, we need to be transparent. So what is the number?
My suggestion would be the 56%. I, I would advise against using the audited number. Um, I think it's important to distinguish between accounting after the fact, including the state's on behalf payments and budgeting, which they are, they're not intended to be the same. Um, you are correct, Mayor, that the accounting principles and the approach would be the same from town to town. So if you wanted to look town to town, you could use the audit report numbers. However, to the extent one community has a higher, um, teacher's retirement liability and contribution, it could distort how much is going to education. And because those are on behalf payments, they're not actually coming from the taxpayers of Berlin directly. They're coming from all of us because we're, we're state taxpayers. Uh, but in terms of what you're voting on and controlling, um, I believe, and historically, we have shown, even prior to the bifurcated budgets, when there was one budget, the presentations always represented, uh, department sixty and sixty-one, which is the board of ed presentation plus department sixty-one expenditures. So I, I, I would, I, I believe the 56% is a better or a more appropriate figure to look at the, the total education cost that's being, uh, presented to the taxpayers of Berlin.
Okay, I appreciate that. So how do we know? I, I mean, I guess the information now, to me, calls the whole chart into question. So how do I know what Glastonbury is reporting and it's 65%? Maybe they're taking the auditor's chart for all we know. So maybe we're the same. Maybe we spend the same amount of money as Glastonbury, if that, if that's the chart they're using. So I'm, I, I just, it's, it's still not clear what all these other towns are using to, so to pull down for, um, I certainly understand what you're explaining, and I get it. But so we're picking all these towns. I don't know where they got the numbers from. Did, you know, did they get it from the board of that budget? Did they get it from the audit report? What are the towns using? You said all the towns are using different numbers. So how do we even have a legitimate comparison? And again, I, I take quite, you know, offense to the board of that, who we try and support, and we know we have a fantastic school system. And we, you know, I think we, you know, budget, uh, we, we fund them, um, barely to put us at the bottom of the list. And it's just very disturbing to me. It just doesn't taxpayer too. Like, you know, they're, they're saying, oh, well, you know, we don't care about education in Berlin. And I've heard that said by some people. And obviously, if they're looking at this chart, I would think the same thing. But that's not the truth. So it's misrepresented somehow. So I just, to me, to put a budget forward that came from the board of finance that already should have fixed this, what do we have the board of finance for? I, I mean, they did a great job, but this glaring piece, which was brought up in their discussion, nobody, you know, I, I think a couple board of finance members spoke about it, but they were, discussion was closed by the chairman. And they sent it forward. I, I, I just, that's, that's more than half our budget. And we have a wrong number in the budget? That, that doesn't make any, that's about the simplest thing right there to fix. We have, God knows how many other little things went through we didn't fix. So how do we fix it? I mean, I guess that's the question now. I mean, I'm not comfortable voting on it until we get an accurate number that's going to the board of that as part of our whole budget. I don't think anyone else should be either, but.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
What, what do you mean by not an accurate number? I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm confused.
I'm going by the chart. So the chart here, the BOE percent of town budget compared to surrounding districts. So if you look at their chart, Glastonbury, Farmington, Newington, Cromwell, Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, Berlin, dead last, 50.74%. So it's actually 56%. I, that's the figure we're going to use. So obviously, that doesn't put us at the bottom of the heap. Um, and it's, it's not a fair representation if, if 56% of our budget, uh, educational costs, including school security and department sixty-one is going in the board of ed, then that's what we should be reporting, not this chart, which has it as 50.74%. I mean, that certainly changes. If 56% of the budget's going to them, that changes what's going to the town, right? I mean, if, if it's 50.74, then the rest is going to the town. But if it's 56%, it's different. So how do we not have an accurate number? And how do we compare it to other towns, which, as you just explained, and I don't know if the board of ed got, or the board of finance got this explanation every time reports it differently. So what good is this chart? It really doesn't tell me anything, other than it makes Berlin look bad, which is, which is sad if it's not correct. And it doesn't appear, from what you've just explained, to be correct, which is what I thought when I looked at it. I mean, there was four different numbers. Fifty, there was fifty, I think there's, well, maybe there's three fifty-five and a sixty-five. So which one is it? It's the middle one? I, I mean, door number one, door number two, number three? I, I don't know why the board of finance wouldn't have fixed this. I guess that's what's disturbing me. And the board of, this was brought out at a board of finance meeting, I believe, the board of that, heard that. And they still left the 50.74 in there. I don't trust this to make the buzz, budget figure accurate, what's going to what town department. Let them out.
Well, Mayor, I would say that the 56% is what the board of finance brought forward. Um, the numbers are there, and that's what the town manager presented. You, you are correct that the board of ed presented that chart, um, during their section of the presentation. Um, but the 56% is based on actual budget numbers. So what was included, both revenue and expenditure. And, um, it incorporated all of the aspects, including expected education cost sharing grant from the state, as well as, um, all of the other increases or changes that the board of finance voted on, including the board of ed reduction. So that 56% is based on the budget that is before you. The 50% is, is taking the straight board of ed number as opposed to board of ed plus sixty-one. So they're using the same budget numbers. It's just a decision to use only the true board of ed submitted budget versus using the board of ed plus department sixty-one. So the budget is the same regardless. It's just a matter of which statistic someone, uh, elects to present.
Right? But by leaving the department sixty-one out, it looks like our contribution to education in the town of Berlin is incorrect. I know it's on the town side, but it doesn't matter. It's going to the board of that. I mean, it's just an accounting, you know, uh, way where we, I don't, I don't know why we, we have it that way. I guess that's the way it's always been. I don't know. I, I think other towns include everything in their figure, what I understand. Different towns do. But how, how do we suffer? I mean, we're, we're comparing on a chart. We have no idea how Glastonbury does their accounting. We have, I guess, no idea of Farmington, Newington, Cromwell. We don't know how any of these, what, these don't mean anything on this chart to, to me, after our explanation tonight, right? Because we don't know how Glastonbury reports their budget, their figures, right? I mean, do they have a town side with department sixty-one like we do? Do, are they using the auditors' figures? I mean, they could use anything they want, right? Doesn't, I mean, it's up to them how they're gonna report their budget on the board of ed side, right?
I, I think it's a fair statement to say that it's, um, probably maybe not, um, it's probably not meaningful to make the comparison because each town operates a little bit differently. Um, and you could even say that each town has different circumstances. For example, Berlin obviously underwent a substantial high school renovation that resulted in almost $50 million of debt. Farmington has been debating, uh, a substantial upgrade to their high school for several years now and have not voted it in. So you would be looking, there, there are characteristics that can be material from town to town, um, that can distort a comparison. It's difficult to compare one town to the next. Um, I think it, it really has to be more of over time, where has that number been? And, and I think it's probably a better, a better representation to determine where Berlin has been, which is consistently in the mid 50% for department sixty plus sixty-one. Um, that has historically represented about 55-ish percent, somewhere mid fifties, sometimes a little bit higher, um, of the budget each year.
I understand that, and it, it makes sense, I think, to all of us. But again, at every board event presentation I've been to since I've been the mayor, is that Berlin is at the bottom of the heap. There's no way then with this chart, with this explanation.
I don't know what you mean, that when you say the bottom of the heap.
The chart. So the chart they just gave the other night, Joanne, shows us a 50%, okay? We, we, we are funding our town less than everybody on this chart. That is not correct, from what I just heard. So that's not right. It's not right at all. In fact, we don't even know how these towns are reporting. So for them, it's not apples to apples at all. And it's showing us not paying attention to education, and I find that offensive, because that's not the case. And maybe if we go to Glastonbury and look at how they do their reporting, maybe there is 57% if we back up the teachers' pensions and whatever else they, however they're reported. So it, it's just not a fair representation. It's not transparent at all, quite frankly, because look at what we had to go through to figure this out.
I mean, at the, at the minimum, we're at 56%.
Minimum, right.
Minimum.
Compared to what, though? You know? I mean, maybe Glastonbury adds in that teacher's pension. Maybe there's, maybe they add in the debt payments. We, we have, you know, debt payments to the high school.
Which makes it really a difficult thing, because you can't compare it with other towns.
Exactly.
You don't know, you know.
But our board of that does. Right. You're right. But here's what they did. They did compare it. And they put a chart out to the public who looks at this chart. If I'm a member of the public and I'm reading this chart, oh my goodness, that's terrible. Look at that. We're at the bottom of this list of surrounding towns, but in reality, no, we're in the middle of the list. In fact, we might even be at the top for all we know.
Well, I, I would like to state that I am not offended by the board of education's, um, presentation and the numbers they presented. And I think that our administrators, our board of education, our teachers do everything they possibly can to present a reasonable budget, make sure the kids are well educated.
But they haven't with this chart, Joanne. You could, you can argue it all day long. I'm not, I'm not, it's a great education system. We got great people, great, great students, but the public doesn't get to fair representation of how much we spend on education. You can't, you can't get it from, unless you go through this, the antics you just had to go through. I mean, the board of finance should, finance should have fixed it. I mean, I guess it's in the budget, but it certainly wasn't brought up at the presentation to us. And I'm still not convinced that this figure and talking to a couple towns is correct, even at the 56% if we compare it to other towns. You know, I think the area here, we hold up, you know, Mayor, I think all, most of the times I've seen the, um, the presentations like this, Glastonbury, Farmington, Newington, they're always kind of held up as, you know, well, they spend the most money. Well, maybe we do. We don't know how they're reporting it. So, I mean, it's important to know that we're putting a lot of money into the board of that, and we are, we do. We have a great school system. Why downplay it? I, I don't, I don't get that. What? Because they want more money? I mean, I, I don't know the reason. I wouldn't even assume the reason. Or they just pick the way they report it, because, again, in Berlin, we've reported this way for 20 years. So maybe it's time we fix it. And if we want to compare to other towns, which I think we probably should, it's gotta be apples to apples somehow. It can't just be, you know, everyone's picking different figures and we don't know what, how we stand. It, it, I mean, we're gonna do what we're gonna do in Berlin. We're our own town. But, you know, it's good to see what the other towns are doing and where we fit in. But if we don't have an accurate figure where we fit in, then why even talk about it? Either make it accurate or don't talk about it.
Kevin, I have another question to ask, if I may. Is the debt number that we pay as a town or the board of ed, is that number in here anywhere? In that department sixty-one? Is that another number all by itself too?
It is, it is in the debt section, as reported. It's not in department sixty-one. Um, debt, even general government or education is its own separate area in the budget as well as in the accounting. It's not charged to any particular department.
Six percent is a huge difference, in my opinion, on a budget this large. So if we're funding that, we should be reporting it as such.
Kevin, did you say that in the town manager's report that, for the budget that he, he gave us, it says 56% is the budget for department sixty plus department sixty-one?
In the town manager's presentation that he made, um, at the board of finance meeting, it was, education was 56%.
That's the number that, that we're voting on. And it's listed there, because, I mean, we, we can always go to the board of that discussion that we.
I think that's what we need.
For me, we're voting on the 56% and that's the, we should be looking at, and the one that we can. You talk to the town about town's, they ask a question. Yeah, I see it in the chart here.
And just one more time though, because Roche and I had this discussion a couple of months ago. About using the pie chart for the taxpayers of the schools getting sixty-five percent of our. You know, major expense sources, that's what the audit report said. Um. So that's not accurate to put in the tax bill to show people what actually goes to education. What do you think, Kevin?
Well, it is, it's accurate, um, I just don't know that it's a. I'm not sure that it's the best reflection of the burden on Berlin taxpayers. Um, it is definitely accurate.
With the, with the, yeah, because you got the teacher's pension part in.
Because you have the on behalf payments which uh, they're, they're valid, they're legitimate and all of us as Connecticut State taxpayers bear that burden. Um, but when you're asking the Berlin voters to vote on the Berlin budget. Uh, I, I'm not sure that using. That. Using numbers that include that, those on behalf payments. Which again are, are to the tune of, of several million dollars. Teacher's retirement pension and the contributions are. Quite substantial. So uh, it, it can materially change those numbers, it's also not something that. The Berlin Board of Education or any Board of Education has direct control over. Teacher's retirement is a state program, teachers and, and administrators and others participate whether they want to or not. Um. And that's why I think the fifty-six percent that was presented and has historically been presented. As the breakdown between. All the different areas. In the intent of that pie chart was not just education, but also to. Show that the budget aligns to the priorities that have been stated. Many times for many years, whether it's education, public safety. Physical services, so that's the, the highway department and others um. And, and really kind of showing where the dollars are truly going and that's where the local tax dollars are going. Um, we can certainly include. The pie chart from the audit report, it, it is accurate. Um. But I, I would, if, if you, if you're asking me, I think the fifty-six percent is more representative of what. Berlin taxpayers are being asked to vote on when they vote on the Berlin town budget.
That's uh, that, that's fair, um, if we backed out of that sixty-five percent, the, the teacher's pension payments. Just that. Out of that number. What's the percentage of that, out of curiosity?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me, it would be, it would be definitely into the. Mid potentially upper fifties, but it would definitely be down substantially.
It would be down, but it'd be higher than the fifty-six percent?
Uh, it, it could be, I'm not sure, I don't have that in front of me.
I'd like to know with that.
I thought there was a chart, I'll, I'll have it, a pie chart. Somebody did for the Board of Finance and it showed fifty-nine percent, that's another number that I thought was floating around out there. Do you remember that from a Board of Finance meeting?
I don't recall that, it may have been out there.
Town mind have prepared it for the Board of Finance, I'm not sure, I, I'd have to ask the Board of Finance members, but uh. I thought there was a chart. That was in their meeting. Um. Somebody's got me. I, I never, I never saw it, I, I don't know what happened to it, but. I think it was at fifty-nine percent, I wanna say. But. And I think, I think the town. Let me. So here's a breakdown of fiscal twenty-two. So this included education, debt, Department sixty-one, private school, debt, fifty-nine percent. And the rest, the general government was forty-one percent, I, I don't know. Ring a bell, it shows. Local tax, lo, local taxes, uh. Funding source, collection rate remains ninety-eight point three percent, used to go, of course, building DNA, service fees. Certainly looks like our budget. And this is showing taxes eighty-six point six percent, you know, and how that's broken out, so that, I think that was a, a chart, if I remember, Kevin. You know how the auditor's chart uses different funding like grants and all that, and you know, we obviously have the teacher's pensions, but this chart. Used, I think, just property tax, does that make sense?
Um, it does.
I think, I think that this is tax is eighty-six point eight percent.
And that may have been, it, it may be a net actual chart, so basically taking all of the expenditures and then applying. Dedicated non-tax revenue and breaking it out. Uh, if it does include debt, debt service is about ten and a half percent in the budget. That amount is slightly skewed to the town side, to the general government side, so if you took the fifty-six percent. You would likely get around sixty percent if you added debt into it. So you, you could, we could use that number if you wanted to split debt. For education, um. Traditionally, it has not been included only because. The buildings, the infrastructure are owned by the town and. Um. It is traditionally been included in the general government side of the budget, as has all of the capital.
Yeah.
As those are dedicated to the assets that are really more general government driven.
Right. So.
Sorry.
This was the other number, I, I knew there was a fourth number, so I get, and, and from. From what, somebody sent this to me and they said it was presented to the Board of Finance. So, and I said, this has, that. It has Department sixty-one private schools and school debt fifty-nine percent. Yeah.
So adding in the debt could, adding in the debt certainly could, would push it higher than fifty-six percent and.
Why would they not?
Yeah, you're using all the same numbers, it's just a matter of. What, what would be included? So you, you go all the way from the Board of Ed by itself. To the Board of Ed plus sixty-one, to the Board of Ed plus sixty-one plus debt, um. And, and then obviously if you add on. On behalf payments for uh, teacher's retirement, then you start to get to the audit number where the number is considerably higher.
So why wouldn't we add in the school debt if it's for school buildings that we built like the high school, why would we keep that out of the equation? Is that just how we are reporting things in Berlin, like you said?
Uh, tr- traditionally, we have not included that because it's not a, a controllable expense, it's, it's a known expense of general government. Um, but it could certainly be presented, there's, the numbers are there, it's, it's easy enough to present that. It's, it's really, that, that would come down to a matter of. Um. How you feel is best appropriate, how is most appropriate to present to taxpayers? The budget that you would be asking them to vote on.
Well, I mean, as a taxpayer, if I. Voted for a new high school, whether I voted or not, it passed, right, or, or whatever, you know, we voted for the new high school, right? So every taxpayer, whether they voted yes or no, had to pay for that new high school. Which we needed it and it's all good, but that's an expense to education for the town of Berlin. And why, why that wouldn't be included, I mean, that's a, you know, fifty million dollar, right, debt. That we started with, I think, right, other than, well, I mean, it was eighty-five million dollar project, I know some of the street verse, but. So why, I, I don't understand why we, and, and I'm, I'm pretty sure. Some of the other towns around this list include that debt in their figure. So now we're up to fifty-nine percent. And that looks even better on the chart, and I'm just going by the Board of Ed chart, it's not my chart. But, so now we're at sixty percent, so it, it's just not, it's not apples to apples in a budget that we're always, you know. Listen, I've been in many, many PK meetings and I got beat up a lot over how much we contribute to Berlin or Board of Education. And I always thought we were pretty fair. And I guess that's why I kind of, you know, as the mayor, I'm personally offended, because if the figure's really almost sixty percent. And I got a chart going out to the public that says fifty. That's not, that's not right, and that's not what the taxpayers are paying for the education of our children. Including the new high school debt. That's all part of it, I don't know how you separate that out, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. Very logical person and, you know, if that's what we're paying for education, that's what we got, go ahead.
Oh, well, if we do that, then we have to do the rest of the body, give it that in for the general government budget, right? I mean, it's, it's not personal, so.
And, and why wouldn't we, so we know.
It's cumbersome, most towns don't do that.
It's cumbersome, but it's, I, I, I can't believe it's that cumbersome, we have, you know, Mr. Delaney, who was our Wiz, you know. We're CFO, Roche here, I think we could probably figure that out, but, I mean, it would be good to know how much. With whatever we're borrowing, what's going where, I mean, that, what, what a, what a better picture of our town finances could there be than that? And how much easier is that to explain, I mean, Board of Ed budget is this much, some of it's our debt service. Debt to build a new high school, you know, someday we build a community center, oh, here's this percentage for the community center, this is what you're paying folks. You know, I mean, I don't.
Um, Mayor, what?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just, just, just one, one thing, because this, I've heard this topic in a couple of other communities and some of my peers, we've spoken about it. One risk of including debt in there is that uh, in, in the total number. Is you run the risk of. Operating costs essentially subsidizing debt payments. And typically, when someone. Proposes a substantial capital investment. Like renovating the high school, um, it is not with the intended purpose of then supplanting. Operating costs to run the school later on, it, it's done because there is a, a compelling. Physical need, the, the, the physical structure needs to be renovated, and I think in the case of Berlin High School, everybody would agree that. Um, the school needed the renovation, whether what was actually done or not, that's probably debatable, but. Um. The idea isn't, if you include it in with the rest of the Board of Ed, it's essentially saying that. The, it's okay to lower the operating costs, potentially lower your operating costs to supplement or subsidize. The debt service payments and typically they're, they're shown separately because servicing debt. The intent of doing that is not to replace operating costs, so that's why they're kind of kept separate to avoid that risk, in other words. If, if you had a million dollar. Debt service payment due um. By including them all together, you, you could run the risk, the town could run the risk. Of. Potentially, worst case scenario, laying off teachers or affecting curriculum to pay for that cost, so putting them together. You might have an unintended consequence, I guess that's what I'm trying to say is, as to why you would want to keep them separate.
I get that, 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 that makes some sense, um, our debt service payment this year going forward is gonna be what, for the new budget? What's the debt service payment?
Uh, it's about ten and a half percent of the budget, you're uh. About, I believe it's about ten million dollars.
A million?
Eight, eight, eight point eight million.
Okay, so eight point eight million is our debt payment. Service payment. What percentage of that is for the new high school? Or any other bonding for the Board of Ed?
Uh, it is, it's just about fifty fifty. Between general government and Board of Ed.
Either one. No, either way, that, that, that's fine, well, well, I don't know, it, it affects it in this other chart, I, I just don't know where the other chart came from, it, it went to the Board of Finance, so I, I don't. Know why there's a different chart, that, that's what was confusing me, that we got three, four, well, four different numbers. You got fifty, fifty-six, fifty-nine and sixty-five. You can see certainly, I hope, everyone. That, why this would be very confusing. It's confusing to me, and this is my, what, fifth, fifth budget, whatever, and, and I, I, I don't know why. It never came up before, but the, the Board of Finance did bring it up, but they never really concluded, other than I'm sure they. I, I agree with you, they sent forward the fifty-six percent that's in the budget here, but. Um. I don't know, it's just, this chart really bothers me and, and definitely make it up at the Board of Ed. Uh, if our, if the budget shows a fifty-six percent, uh, however we decide we report it as a town. Or not, at the bottom of the list, it's just not a fair representation of what, how we support our Board of Ed. Uh, we're in the middle, can we do better, of course we can, can we do worse yet? But we're not. The worst of all the towns that they selected, and I, I don't know, there's other towns around that aren't, are not on the list. It just bothers me because it's not correct and it shouldn't be put out there to the public. And it just says some bad things about how we're supporting a Board of Ed, which is not true, obviously. So I don't know, you know, I'm sorry, that's my thing, and I, I just, it doesn't make sense, there's four different figures. And reported different ways, we have no idea how these towns on the chart reported, so we have no idea, they shouldn't even, this chart should be thrown out, it shouldn't even be here. Right, I mean, from this whole explanation, I know it took a while, I apologize for that, but. You know, it has to be clear to the people, I mean, we're supposed to be transparent and we're not at all. With this, if I can't figure it out, sitting here doing budgets for five years. It's confusing to me, and to all, probably all of us, and I, I apparently it's confusing to the Board of Finance too, our experts, our advisors, how's the average citizen gonna figure it out?
So, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you that chart there in the Board of Ed, uh, proposal or presentation was grossly unfair. But Kevin, uh, every budget referendum has been written the same way, so that. The Department sixty-one money has always been the general government budget, it's always been written this way, we're never gonna pull that out and make another sentence, right? It's just a matter of communication. I think, really.
Correct. Correct.
Uh, I'm very pleased with. How the budget turned out and I guess we have a better job of explaining some of these differences, the mayor.
Yes, sir, um, I think my vote for this, well, I'll agree with fifty-six percent. I think that's the word that should get out, and, you know, I'm not afraid of that, no, that's good, no, I got that's fair, our own town manager says so. So, you know, I, I'm genuinely pleased and all about.
Does that, does that percentage change it per people spending on their charts or not? So if they're saying we're at fifty percent, we're at fifty-six, does that change it per people spending? Does, right?
No, per pupil spending is, um, every community has to submit their per pupil spending. All of their raw numbers, using the same reporting mechanism to the State Department of Education, and then the State Department of Education. Uh, produces the, the per pupil spending. And we do, we do include Department sixty-one costs, um, those are. Uh, those are submitted from the town to the Board of Ed and have been included every year. In their numbers, they're presented based on the state criteria, so the state asks, for example, how much of your, how much debt did the Board of Ed, or how much did you incur in debt? On behalf of education, and they ask for the pieces and then the State Department of Education puts it together so that the numbers can be consistent. Rather than worrying about how each town would report it, they just ask for the data and then the State Department of Education determines those.
Okay, all right, I, 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 I have taken up a lot of time. But I think it's important, uh. So what are we all, what do, what do we think about the budget? Anyone else? Please.
I think that as long as we can get it out there, uh. In, in terms of an accurate pie chart, and not even looking at comparisons to other communities, that we are at fifty-six percent without the debt. It's much better than fifty percent, you know, that's my personal opinion.
Well.
I think Brendan summed it up with our communication. I think we're all happy with the budget, everybody worked really hard on it. Town side did a fantastic job controlling costs. She with the COVID and all of that. Good communication for you.
Brendan? Good, good. That's good, we're all good, good. All right, we're good, so everybody's happy, we'll, we have that in the budget, that's great, and I, I. Probably will pay a visit to the Board of Education and ask them for the future if we can, you know. Get together a little bit closer on some of this stuff, I, again, I know it's a cumbersome process, but. I think it was important to get that out to the town to understand, you know, there are different figures floating around and I, I think, I think, I don't know, we all think, because obviously. I think we're all in favor of this budget, that it's, it's fair um for the town and for the Board of Ed side and that. That for COVID, you know, the town, a citizen of the Board of Ed, meaning that the town, you know, got through COVID. Um, relatively well, I mean, you know, people got sick, we lost loved ones, people lost their jobs, people lost businesses, I, I don't mean, discount what has happened to many people in Berlin. But if you look at, you know, the state and you look at the national level, we, we've been. Let's say fortunate, we're fortunate in a lot of different places. And uh, you know, I think even with uh. The economic development going on, I, I don't, I honestly don't even know how. Going into these ribbon cuttings targeted to small business owners. I, I salute them, like, they got the, the guts to go through and open a business in the middle of COVID, I, God bless them, and. You know, they're all seem to be, you know, doing well, the new ones and the other ones have, many of them have come back, so. It's great, and I think to deliver another, uh, you know. it's great. And I think to deliver another, uh, you know, zero percent tax increase to Berlin, when we're still suffering from COVID, it's not obviously over yet, uh, as we have heard recently, is wonderful. And it's great that everybody worked together and we we were able to, well, assuming they both were at the referendum, I guess. Um, uh, able to deliver this to the taxpayers for their referendum to to vote on it. So, yes.
I think that's the the point you just made there is, and going ahead to the referendum, is the fact that this community really came together this last year. And like you said, from businesses to the services offered, to just neighbors looking out for neighbors. I mean, we just heard from the police chief, and then we've got community watchers out now, where people are looking after each other. Th- this has been a tremendous year, and and this town has far better than some because of the fact that we have really, really, really great community. I think everybody should be applauded for the work that they've done, especially th- those that have really gone above and beyond to help out the the general.
I think we need to give a shout out to the Board of Education, too, and all our administrators, to be the way our kids continue to get educated. Technology that was invested in and procured at the onset of COVID and the fact that, you know, they were able to learn initially in with the hybrid model and now everybody going back safely. Um, certainly, there are continued be concerns, but um I know that our town has been envy of other towns because we have continued to um to educate our kids in a really excellent way.
Yeah, that's true. And our government and our town hall, too, uh, and talking to other towns and even talking to our town manager in his town, not to slander the town, you did, I, um, we may go, but, you know, I I mean, you know, close to the public, but we we may know, and people work, and 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 that's how the town continues business. And a lot of towns, I think, Attorney DiNocchio told me that, but I think he told us all that at a couple of meetings, that he represents many other towns, and I'll let you say it, Jeff, because I'm not going to take your words. What did you have to say about Berlin during COVID?
Well, my my comments, which were really, you know, at a time where there was a tremendous amount of uncertainty, were really focused on the fact that the Berlin Town Hall folks didn't miss a beat. You know, business continued on a daily basis. Everyone was as responsive and as available and as committed as they were pre-COVID. So that really was, you know, something to be said when there was a very high level of anxiety. There still is, but, you know, now people are getting vaccinated, and they seem to think that the better days are ahead. But it really was remarkable dealing with the Berlin team day in and day out, how focused and productive everybody remained.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And the last, one of the last ribbon cuttings, the the new gas station there on the Berlin Turnpike, the uh, what is it, Gulf, I think, by, how many?
Same school service, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he he couldn't be more appreciative of the town staff, Arroche, and Kevin, and Chris Edge, and everybody who worked with these businesses. I mean, he he said, Berlin, push it through. He said, you know, he wasn't sure he was gonna, he was gonna make it. But he said Berlin really, really helped them. The staff, you know, did everything they could possibly do to get him to open. And he also promises the lowest gas prices in Berlin, too. And what I've seen, I think they might be. I think he might be beating Citgo on Farmington Avenue, even though they're pretty low. But uh, he he really praised the town staff, and I've heard that from just about every, at every ribbon cutting. And there's been, I think, twenty-five since the beginning of twenty twenty. Chris Edge could correct me if I'm wrong. Small businesses, we have the other, other large investments, too. But um, yeah, so the staff, Kate, and everybody, you know, the whole, everybody worked, and it's amazing. We we did get through, hopefully, the worst part, so. Anyway.
I think it's important also to acknowledge our state leadership. I have friends that live in a myriad of states across the country, and we're very fortunate to have been committed to get, considering vaccine rollouts and, uh, once again, our education system, to think of that, um, to acknowledge our state leadership as well.
Yes, you've done well compared to the country, I think. Okay, what do we think? Anything else? What else do we need to talk about here? Do we have a, do we have a?
We have to.
Compared motion? No, I know. Is there one on agenda?
So it would be to approve the budget.
Oh, and on that question, the referendum, I think Attorney DiNocchio, we spoke today, so the order just came out today.
We're all set. Don't worry the water.
We're good for a word, but. So we're good.
We're good.
Today, although, right, something came out?
So, yes, the executive orders came out that deal mainly with referendum.
Yes.
So first of all, I can now issue applications for, well, I can issue absentee ballots if somebody wants to use COVID as an excuse. All right, it was borderline up until, because our referendum is April twenty-seventh, and the executive orders went until, um, April, I think it was nineteenth or twentieth. So we're we're set as of today. Uh, we can put the ballot box outside. If people want to drop their ballots in the box, that can be continued to use for the referendum. We're going to start issuing absentee, um, application, not absentee, uh, we're gonna, yeah, absentee ballots on, um, Thursday. And that goes along with our charter. Every town is different in how they do referendums. Some have adjourned town meetings. They can't even mail, well, under the new executive orders, they can't. But we mail out a ballot on the eighth, and um, we have forty-four going out for mainly the people who are currently on the absentee ballot list because of their disabilities or illnesses. And then we've had a couple of phone calls, but we're we're good. We're we're set. At least until.
Till that all changes.
Yeah. Because it only goes until, like, May twenty.
Yeah.
So, but, yeah, Berlin's good as far as how. Yeah, we were, we were on the phone a lot today.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, we had, so.
Good, Kate, you want me to read the numbers?
I think he sure took that you were gonna approve the budget as set for the, um, for ed and for the general government, and then to automatically send, um, the budgets to referendum.
To separate, to separate motion, right?
I don't do them all together. Fine.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to for the board of finance to adopt the budget as follows. Board of Education budget is forty-seven million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. The general government's budget is forty-six million, seventy-three thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Total of ninety-three million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, forty-seven dollars. Also to automatically forward the budget to the referendum.
Okay, second. Second, the motion. And then discussion. Hey, alls in favor?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you a lot.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Arroche.
Sorry, Kevin.
Tonight, I have a forward tax abatement for. Okay, so let's see, it's fresh.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hopefully, I will be relatively succinct. National Sign, which has been down on Four Road for a number of years, actually purchased a firm in another town. The firm is going to be relocated to town, and in order to do that, they're going to be constructing a brand-new twenty-three thousand, seven hundred square foot building, looking for a five-year tax abatement. Uh, this is in line with our new tax abatement policy, a relatively new, spending over a million dollars, very exciting local ownership, uh, new jobs, new opportunities, and the good thing, too, rent an existing property and very excited about it. Looking for your blessing tonight.
Thank you, Chris. In line with our policy, any questions for Chris? None. Go ahead and take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the tax abatement for Asama Realty Associates LLC for the construction of an additional twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy square foot. So now this is the Four Road, fifty percent in year one, forty percent in year two, thirty percent in year three, twenty percent in year four, and ten percent in year five for the town's tax abatement policy.
Second on that.
Second.
Are there comments or questions? Any none, alls in favor?
Thank you very much. Everybody have a great night.
Thanks, Chris. First.
Tonight, item number five is morning catch basin cleaning. Whoops, mic on.
Good evening, all. I hope you can hear me clearly.
I buy it, yes.
Okay, um, we put out a bid for, uh, cleaning our catch basins in town, you know, to take, remove the sand, the sediment, and other debris from the sumps. We received four bids on March eighteenth. The prices ranged from twenty-three dollars per basin to ninety-eight dollars per basin. The lowest bidder was Shaw Vac out of Plantsville, and they've been doing the basins in town since I got here and way before I got here, and they're doing a great job. So uh, we have no trouble at all recommending that they be awarded this contract. It's a two-year contract. It'll cover two seasons, so it'll end in December of next year. So we're looking for approval to, uh, engage them for, uh, you know, starting actually, uh, this month.
Thanks. Thank you. Go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I will make motion to approve utilizing Shaw Vac Services LLC for the purchase of catch basin cleaning at the annual price of twenty-three dollars per basin through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second, the motion. Any other comments or questions on that? Are we none, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. So. Thank you. Thanks.
Tonight, on number six. Tree removal services, Mike.
Yeah, yes, um, similar to the, uh, catch basin bid, we put out a bid for tree removal services. Um, the way we do this is on a unit cost basis for items such as the bucket truck with the crew. They have all the chainsaws and the ropes and, um, chip truck. Many, they have a mini activated with a grapple, which is very handy for handling the the logs that are actually cut up, and and our crew can just they manage traffic control or even let them just run if they, uh, if it's on a size road. So we did, um, we got, we just got four bids in for that, uh, unit cost contract. Distinct, actually, I'm sorry, two bids. Distinctive Gardens and Tree Care of South Windsor, um, had the lowest equipment and labor rates. They've also been doing, uh, work in town for many years with our highway and public grounds apartments. So, um, we have no trouble at all recommending that they also be engaged for a two-year contract. That'll give us till the end of April two thousand twenty-three to use their services. So we're looking for, uh, approval for that contract as well.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to award contract number twenty-two-one seventeen for tree removal services to Distinctive Gardens and Tree Care of South Windsor. Funding will come from established line item accounts within fiscal years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. Budgets through established unit prices.
Second, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alls in favor? Aye. I oppose. If you care.
Thank you. Tonight, I have number seven. Thank you, Mike.
Mike.
Good night. Tonight, I have number seven. Is there a vice statement of need? Post community senior center? Jen?
Yep. Everyone, um, so as Donna Bovee mentioned before, when we originally did, when the commission originally did the statement of needs for the community center, they worked, um, on the pool aspect with the old previous athletic director, and something he had left out was the diving well. So when QA and M launched their project website and launched it on social media, a lot of the comments mentioned they needed diving well. Otherwise, the high school wouldn't even be able to do a full competition at the new community center, senior center with the new pool. Um, so I talked to Mike Herne, and he walked me through what the charter process was to do, submit a revised, um, statement of need. So the commission revised their statement of need. They worked with the new athletic director, as well as the aquatics coaches, to find out the right dimensions and everything, revised the statement of need. We went to Arroche, Arroche approved it. Then once you guys approve it, it needs to get pushed to the Public Building Commission. QA and M is already aware of the diving well being missing and has already kind of made notes into their project that they will include it moving forward, but per charter, we need to do this and submit it so it could be passed on to PBC.
Okay, thanks, Jen.
Yep.
So, uh, take a motion on this? Two.
One, I move to approve the revised statement of need for post-community slash senior center as prepared by the Parks and Rec Mission.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Process moving along on this. I know it's a long, can be long and painful, but at least, at least, uh, moving it along. So, uh, what are the comments? Alls in favor? Aye. Aye.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you. For two, I want to make a motion to forward the Public Building Commission filed by section eight.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Any none, alls in favor? Aye. Both, so.
Thank you. Tonight, I have number eight, an update on the people vote here.
Hello again. So I'm gonna actually let Stephen talk first about the details of the project and how we got to the situation we're at, and then I'll kind of wrap up and tell you what the long-term goal is and how we're going to hopefully get to get there.
That's a great way to put it, the situation we're at. Um, we called for design services and selected WMC to start the renovation project and coming up with the plans of how to attack not only the field settling and the undulations, the unevenness, or the lack of topo throughout the field. During the process, we've come to find out how more involved it actually was, especially the north end, northeast end of the field where it sank somewhere between eighteen inches and two feet. Can they hear me?
Sorry, Steve. Can you hold on just a second, please? Man, I was, those on the call, please meet yourself. It's a background noise. Thank you. Paul and Steve.
Should I start again, or could you hear me?
You can hear me.
Okay, um, so we started to learn really quickly that how much the northeast corner of the field had sunk somewhere between eighteen inches and twenty-four inches. WMC and the town went out to bid for contractors. We had two bids come in, both that were over the budgeted amount. One was, I think, was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, the other one was two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. With that, they were only touching a third of the actual playing surface, leaving us with two-thirds of the field not touched, and the pro, most of the work was being done on the outskirts of the field, trying to bring it to a level, safe playing surface. When we sat down with Arroche, Kevin, Jen, and myself, we decided that not to move forward at the time with the project any further, not only because of lack of funding, but after we had such successful projects as in Zipadelli, Scalise, and Sage One, we didn't think it was a good representation of what Jen and I thought an adequate field would be for youth sports and for the town of Berlin. So, back over to Jen.
So like Steve said, we decided to halt the project in its tracks, and our our long-term goal is to start over, um, delay the project to spring twenty twenty-two. Um, we just said the project scope was way too big. We do need to include more the entirety of the field to really fix the problem, so we're not dealing with the same problem five, six years down the road. Um, ideally, right now, we have dedicated two hundred and fifteen thousand towards this project. There is still money left over in, um, the original bond authorization for the athletic field improvements. So our plan is to come back to you when we go back out to bid for design services to start the project again, looking to use the remainder of that money uh, to make this job the bigger scope that it deserves and really fix the problem once and for all.
Well, thank you, Jen. I'm glad, and Steve, I'm glad you guys figured that out, and, you know, it's, I guess, it's gonna be helpful. We do it the right way, right?
Right.
Long time, so. That's good. So we're just gonna wait. So what what do we say? We have extra fundings? Fun, what we, fun to show this? Okay.
Yeah, so you had the, you had the existing bond authorization that I believe still has a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars that wasn't allocated to any of the project. This is the money that was used for Sage One, and then it was going to be used for Percival. Um, I believe some of the money is also being used to revamp, renovate the Sage ba, uh, Scalise Field bathrooms. So there is money left in there that was not appropriated at all. Um, so that's kind of what we think we're gonna go after, because that would give us the budget we would need to really do the job that it needs to get done.
Yeah, great. That's good. Yeah, no, I'm sure we'll all support that. We want it done, and we know this other field, we could fix that field and with the other funding we have from the state to, you know, get the, uh, high school field turf, then some other improvements we're gonna do. We can make it a lot easier, right? And have more, more playing fields and playing time available for everyone.
Yep.
All right, so no action on this. You gotta go back, right?
Correct.
Yeah, Steve, I just wanna say, you know, I know it's not an easy decision to stop a project like this, but as a parent of a child placed on that field, I appreciate you guys thinking about the safety of the children to basically make that decision. No one's.
Also, Jen, uh, I frequent both fields, uh, most daily, and I commend their crews. They were out there today addressing both fields and the soccer field. So, uh, turn the top of stuff, I'm proud of them.
Yeah, once we made the decision that we're not gonna put Percival under construction, we wanna make sure it's ready because we know Berlin Youth Soccer will love to get on that field this spring. So we will be making that call tomorrow. We just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it before we opened it back up for field of play.
Appreciate it, Jen, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support. Have a good night, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Steve. Bye, Jen.
Tonight on number nine. Jen still on the line. Two.
Yep.
Still here, that's good.
I'm still here. I'm ready for bed.
Maybe not, right?
So.
Is a registration fee for a hundred dollars for JNS Soccer Youth Camp?
Yeah, so this is just a special event. This is, Alex Jocelyn is actually, um, one of the girls soccer coaches for the high school, but he also has a side business with one of the other soccer coaches, and it's an LLC. And he's looking to come and run a youth camp on the fields. Um, so he's paying the field rental fees and everything. He's going to have insurance, but he is charging a registration fee. And every time someone runs a special event or uses our fields to run something that they're charging a registration fee, it needs Parks and Rec Commission and council approval. So that's all we're here for. It's very similar to Nutmaid Games asking for a charge of fee or the lineman challenge asking to charge a fee. It's just a new event, which is why we put it on the agenda.
Okay, got it. Um, okay, go ahead and take a motion on this.
I move to approve Alex Jocelyn of JNS Soccer Camps LLC to charge a registration fee of a hundred dollars for the JNS Youth Soccer Camp, which will take place between June twenty-first, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, five PM to seven PM at Sage Park auxiliary field. Camp will have approximately twenty-five children.
Right? Any other comments or questions?
Something like that.
Favorite? Both. Motion carries.
Thank you. Tonight on number ten.
Fourteen, fourteen dash eight. You know, some.
It's a, thank you Enterprises to charge. The youth football.
It's like, we had the.
Soccer camp.
Yeah, so this is an LLC that is created, that is run by Max D. Lorenzo and John Paul Demko, both names you probably know as being involved in the youth football in our town as well as the high school football. They also have an LLC. They're also looking to run a youth camp. They're also, will have insurance. They will be paying all the field reservation fees, but they are charging a fee. So once again, we just need permission for them to be able to come and run us and charge a fee.
Okay. Uh, take a motion on this.
Okay, I move to approve John Paul Demko on Max D. Lorenzo of P, J. Enterprises LLC to charge a registration fee of one hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars for the youth football schools and girls camp, taking place from June twenty-eighth, July first, two thousand twenty-one. From four forty-five PM to fifty-five PM. Approximately sixty-five children, it's a youth field.
Second on that.
Second.
Um, any other comments or questions? Are we not all in favor?
Aye. Both.
Thank you, Jen.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a good night. Thanks, Jen.
Good night, Jen.
Tonight on number one. Is the adoption of a resolution in support of home rule, disposable zoning, making by Bolin Town Council.
Okay, so I, uh, did some research, been talking to some of my, uh, other contacts, mayors in the towns, and, uh, um, there's been some, um, obviously, nothing's passed yet, but there's many, many, many bills as I could attest to more than I that are, have been proposed to do with, uh, the legislature reaching into our town and everybody's town and controlling our zoning, uh, for different purposes. Uh, so it seems like quite the overreach to me after sixteen years I'm planning and zoning, uh, in Berlin. And if you read, if you read through this, we, we have, um, certainly one of the things that they do want to accomplish, which we, um, have agreed with in Berlin is to provide some affordable housing alternatives to our residents. And we've been, uh, pushing for years to get to that ten percent, um, and beyond. And we do have, uh, we're almost there. We have some other projects, um, that are in the works that will, I think, get us there. So it just, um, it's difficult to imagine the state, uh, reaching in and controlling land use like that in an individual town with, with, every town has its individual issues and problems and, uh, you know, different land that they wanna develop and don't wanna develop. It may be a noble purpose for affordable housing. And again, I think Berlin agrees with it, and hence that's why we're one of the few towns, I believe, that I've heard ever since I've been involved with the town that we're, we're almost at the ten percent. We've tried very hard to get there, and we're actually almost there. And then I heard, I heard another one today they added, which is even stranger that if we, you know, wanna put a multi-unit development up that, um, the, uh, I don't know which committee this came from. I know there's some bills from different committees, right?
There are.
That they're saying that we can't use parking to, you know, control the size of the project or, you know, uh, that, that seems to stop some development. But you put up a, you know, as we've looked at several developments, some that we approved now that are going forward and others in the past, then how do you not look at parking? I mean, you're gonna put up a multi-unit project, and people have to have a place to park their vehicles. Um, I, I, I just am astounded by, uh, some of the things I see coming out of Hartford, certainly in regard to this bill. Um, are people supposed to park their cars? I guess we could build houses all over, but if they can't park their cars, I'm not sure what that means, but hopefully, a lot of them don't pass, but I think it's just quite an overreach and pretty offensive certainly to, you know, the town and what Berlin, uh, has accomplished and is, will continue to accomplish. And that's to get some different type of housing, and that's evident with, um, what we're putting out by, uh, the TOD. And I know there was another bill, uh, in relation to the TOD. I think they pulled that bill, but they were talking about the great development that we're putting into TOD. So we're kind of in line with what they're thinking there. And, uh, of course, um, you know, on the Turnpike, we have a couple of different, uh, projects that are going in. Turnpike Ridge and then the, uh, Diadio Project, a new lobster, where we're gonna have, you know, many units, and there's affordable units in the Diadio Project. There's some affordable units going in in the project. Uh, I think that's by Metro on, um, New Britain Avenue there by, by EverSource. That's, that's in the works too. So again, we're moving forward, trying to do the right thing, trying to have different units for either, you know, our young people to move into town before maybe they could afford a house, and maybe our elderly that wanna sell their house and, and, you know, move into some type of different housing that'd be more affordable. So this is, this is the resolution I think we should send, and, uh, it's, uh, the, uh, reasons are here in the resolution. So, comments? What do we think?
I think it's a wonderful idea, Mark, that we're putting this forward. I certainly, uh, think that we should do something. I am on the Planning and Zoning Committee in Hartford, and I am one of many that does not approve of what the state is trying to do. One size does not fit all, and, um, if we all move to Berlin to live in the type of community that we want, we certainly should be able to pass the zoning laws and regulations, um, and, uh, maintain our own, um, regulations here. Thank you for doing this.
We should support this, um, the overreach by Hartford. It's absurd, be in your neighborhood. You can be able to control our own neighborhoods. What's good for downtown Bridgeport, we, we. It's developed. We have some control of our own destiny and to hand over control of our neighborhood to a group like our legislature so quickly advocate your power to, for one man authority, terrifies.
No, I think it is a good idea, and, you know, Steve would spend some time. If we're senior housing, we can't seem to get that straight. We've been trying here forever in town, even long before I got into this town council. All kinds of things in this resolution that doesn't come up in the topic of conversation. If you force this on towns, don't have that discussion about resources, natural resources. And, uh, you know, the funding that's gonna have to be to support it, this above and beyond our, our budget would be passed around. I'm gonna be.
Go in.
Good.
Mike? Okay, so, um, we'll go ahead, and I guess we should, we should read it into the record. I guess the form of motion would be a resolution. Yes.
Yes, I think we should read it into the record. Should I go? There's two pages. Okay, I will approve the resolution, uh, a resolution by the Berlin Town Council in support of home rule and municipal zoning decision-making. Parents, Connecticut's towns and cities successfully use local zoning and planning processes to balance private property rights, community, communities' interests, plans on infrastructure, housing needs and economic growth, and where local control and decision-making powers the residents and taxpayers of each town and city to carefully tailor zoning policies that reflect its unique geography, economy and housing market. And whereas localized decision-making ensures the greatest level of accountability by allowing effective community members the greatest level of input, a platform through a public hearing to provide specific, relevant information on potential impacts that only they would have knowledge of. Whereas local control and local input in the neighbors and the local community provide beneficial suggestions, identify errors and maximize community finding on zone, zoning proposals. Whereas proposals have been introduced in the General Assembly, strip local planning and zoning processes from towns and cities. Whereas proposals have been introduced in the General Assembly, allow by right market value family development, multifamily development that will not generate any new affordable housing units. Whereas proposals have been introduced in the General Assembly to allow outside housing authorities within fifteen mile radius to develop affordable housing projects than our town and city. And whereas by right, multifamily development could lead to exponential market value we're building. It could cause adverse impacts to our talent and your infrastructure. And whereas by right development gives outsized rights to builders for all other property owners and prevents local planning and zoning commissions identifying the potential impacts of their project, imposing conditions upon the developer to address those direct impacts. Whereas eliminating public hearings and community input on zoning matters would have unintended consequences such as increased infrastructure costs, increased local property taxes, reduced home and business values which will be borne by the town residents. Whereas each town and city already have the choice to modify or abolish its zoning ordinance. It's the elected town or city government decides its best services to the community's interests. Whereas over the course of decades, Berlin has planned for, grown and diversified its affordable housing stock. Whereas Berlin's zoning regulations provide various options for development of affordable housing, and additional affordable units have been obtained during the application process, agreements and applicants. Whereas Berlin's commitment to providing affordable housing alternatives to its residents, existing in perspective apparent the content of the Berlin zoning regulations and the number of affordable housing units that have been built in the town. Whereas per the recent released two thousand twenty affordable housing appeals list, twenty-two, four percent of Berlin's eight thousand one hundred and forty-two housing units were confirmed as affordable. And whereas due to the town's commitment and consistent effort to expand affordable opportunities, someone is likely to reach ten percent within the next year or so. It's been a consistent leader year after year from non-exempt municipalities, increasing and maintaining its affordable housing stock. Whereas Berlin is ready to perform a housing needs assessment and land use and zoning assessment in the upcoming months to prepare, adopt and submit its affordable housing plan by July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two in compliance with Connecticut General Statute, section eight dash thirty-J. How be resolved? The town council, the town of Berlin proposes state mandate, one-size-fishball zoning legislation and the ability of an outside housing authority to have jurisdiction for Berlin's affordable housing plan. Any similar, similar legislation that would further or will remove diminished local control, decision-making related to planning and zoning affordable, or affordable housing from the town of Berlin. Finally, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be sent to all state representatives, state senators representing this town, all members of the state legislatures planning and zoning, planning and development, finance and housing committees to all legislatures sponsoring bills that remove local control of planning, zoning, affordable housing. That's adopted on this sixth day of April, two thousand twenty-one. Berlin Town Council.
Take a vote. We just vote, roll call vote.
Yeah, it will, would, I would say that Charlie, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, Brandon, you moved it, right?
Yes.
But Charlie, if you could second it. And now you can.
Take a roll call vote.
You can. Senator, Chris Jackson.
Hi. Senator, Woody.
Excuse me.
Senator, Paeonessa.
Hi.
Senator, Russell.
Hi.
Senator, Bernada. Senator, Beach.
Hi.
Neos.
Hi.
Both in passes.
Thank you all very much. I, I, I think it's important. Uh, I appreciate, I think, what the Berlin staff and planning and zoning and economic development and everybody is, um, trying to, I think, do the right thing, you know, so. I think it's, uh, it's important that we send that, and you mentioned it, and I just wanna mention senior housing, which is very frustrating for all of us. I mean, we're working on senior housing now, I think it's been seven years, which is a travesty. And in the meeting with the legislature, with a couple of legislators that represent us, um, they weren't aware of it, which is quite shocking to me that they weren't aware of how difficult under, you know, state law and funding and all the other things we need to do to get senior housing, and how it's not really preferred under state law. That's why it's taken so long. It's very hard to get the funding for it. And, uh, you know, that, that's, I mean, affordable is kind of part of it, but senior housing is a little different. It always was characterized a little bit different, which they don't seem to recognize now. And that seems to be why we're having a hard time with it, and every community is having a hard time. Every community in Connecticut, which we, I think Connecticut probably has a little bit older population than many states, we're trying to get this done for seniors, and, um, it's just very, very difficult. So I wish our legislature will read this, and I also wish, as we sent to some of our legislators that have been there and to our new legislator here now, um, that they also focus on, on senior housing projects and, uh, help the towns that are interested in doing it to make it a little bit easier pro, process and help with some of the funding, you know, so we get this done, so.
Twelve. Thank you. Tonight on number four. So this is the Fair Housing Act. As a recipient of the small cities community development, uh, block grant, program requirement, strong commitment and support for the principles and practices of fair housing, equal opportunity. So as part of that, we are asking to read up to the Fair Housing Resolution, Fair Housing Policy Statement, Urban Action Policy Statement, and it complies with the title six of the Civil Rights Act. And then all of the policies of the act are enclosed.
Yeah, we do this every year, right? So we're gonna take a motion.
Yeah, I move to read up to the Fair Housing Resolution, Fair Housing Policy Statement, Berlin Action Policy Statement, complies with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, stated.
Second down. Second down.
Thanks. Um, all is in favor? Aye, aye. Thank you. So. Your Honor, Roche. You're gonna, you're gonna shorten your presentation now, right? No, no, we wanna hear it all.
It's pretty far off. Uh, just very quickly, we, we talked about the space that, you know, we tried to, somebody worked with the Y, the, uh, daycare so that, uh, we remain in on each street, the, uh, fashion academy. Can't give that age. For the board of head and the Y, they're working to find some space at Maggiore. Sitting the two buildings and the other with the schools, and they still haven't made a decision. They'll be getting space, and for the Navica, I would think, they will, and now probably no, the mayor myself, so, I do not board up there. He's a brickton, and the Y did get a couple of times. So that we can keep it moving, see if we can keep the cost the minimum. But we are moving up here in France. It's good costed. Uh, so more on that later. Just, uh, tense in ten, uh, Berlin. Portbridge is planning to celebrate Earth Day on May first in nineteen eleven. They're gonna pick up garbage and clean the area starting at David Wood's Park, ending at the Veteran's Park. Put some stuff in shops, and that's on May first. That leaves them their own, and you know, for their services to, you know, once they collect the stuff, then we can, I mean, pick up the trash and all that. We will have an item next week to come and talk to you about our plans for this summer from the park set right. Summer camps in the pools. You know, I mean, to open it, uh, but there are some restrictions that we have to follow. Like, uh, previous items, they keep changing. By the time you open, we'll, we'll exactly about here. But the intention, uh, we're making arrangements to, uh, open it and offer it to our youth summer of what capacities and all that the next meeting. Uh, we can find, uh, the library director search is on the receivable series. About seven people, paneling, including, uh, three members of, of the board. Very interested in participating and very helpful. And there are two other library directors from the rain towns and two staff members and finding around other, uh, I think the H R director. So we got some really good, strong candidates, and we look forward to wrapping it up soon, the next month or so. Um, building department, uh, some, you know, continuous my team on customer service, they came up with this idea that especially beginning now and, uh, into the year to, it is not really helpful for contractors and others to wait for the, you know, projects to start until the urban town hall at eight-thirty. So we have a standard shift now, starting at seven o'clock, and one person will come earlier, and stay, the other person will stay till much later. The idea is, you know, they would, if somebody who are great, they can be there at the side at seven o'clock, and they would rather get their work done and move on. So, uh, that's good. That's, we can start, and for people are very appreciative of that. All right. And then, uh, finally, for all the Zoom hours, the next month, we are switching the next Zoom, so that we can put that to bed.
Roche, that's the best thing I've heard tonight.
How, how, how?
Don't say anything. Just wait.
It's wonderful.
Then I'll be closed. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Wow, wow, okay.
The dance commercial. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Roche. Um, special committee reports, right? I think the, the only thing, what, what was, we had obviously the golf commission slash, uh, slash town council meeting, which was, I, I think, I think it was all good though, right? Yeah, we all have to show up, and it was nice to see members of the public for change, and, uh, you know, uh, went back to Zoom, which.
And you have people in that next meeting.
Yeah, probably two or three weeks.
Yeah, yeah, we have the, the second, uh, uh, capital, potential consultant, right?
Yeah. The information when they come, so, and, uh, today, this afternoon, yeah, with the golf commission. So they take a look at it, and then we will have a meeting to decide how we go on.
Yeah, I think we got a lot done at that meeting, though. I think we got a lot of inspiration out to the public, which is great. Um, so that was the only meeting. We'll look forward to the next one. Concerts Communications.
Just wanted to do what? Great, thank you, and I can't go without praise. The Tina Doyle and her team at the Year Center was lucky enough to get a vaccination appointment there, and it was phenomenal. It was easy and quick and efficient to people, right? She really did good.
Yeah, that's correct. And when, so is that, that's starting soon, or appointments are, they?
Going on.
Oh, they're going on already? Okay, I knew they were.
At all times, it was seamless and quick, and people.
I get two over here, too. It's good, that's good to hear. As we know. If anyone else?
I think I mentioned that. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
To you. The Central Connecticut Health District is looking back down to try and get a one-day clinic. A big clinic to get to the town. So like, it's a massive clinic, so that you can, people can drive in and get things done. They're working on it, probably May fifth, sixth, around there. So we'll get a pushout as soon as that's available. It's all planning out vaccines and availability and supply, but they're fairly confident they can get it. Not just the seniors, others in town.
Oh, that's great. Wow, that's great. Who else? No? Except, all right, except in a minute. A minute, March sixteenth?
Motion. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept. Say, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, in minutes.
Second on that? Uh, any corrections or anything anybody saw? Here we go. None on this in favor?
Aye.
Want you to adjourn? Second on that? I'm just kidding. Anyone say, hey, Mark? Thank you all very much.
You got to my love.
We see weekends.
Yeah, really. Yes, yeah. What's about?
Same nature.
Bye, Jeff.
Good night.
Yes, good night, Jeff. See ya.
If you, if you send me her stuff, I wanna get this scouse. All right, yeah, I'll talk to you.
See you, guys. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night.